Welcome, everyone. I now call the June 3, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorns, Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kurd.
Here.
Councilmember Menke. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alkab.
Here.
All present with the exceptions of councilmembers Zorns and Menke, who are absent and excused.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities.
We don't have any this evening.
Oh, yeah, it says "none" right there. You put that there, didn't you? Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations. The first up is the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month proclamation. And Councilmember Dodd, are you going to read this?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the City of Bothell recognizes the month of June 2025 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, or LGBTQIA+, Pride Month, and observes Pride Month by raising the Progress Pride Flag throughout the city to honor the history of the LGBTQIA+ liberation movement. And, whereas, the Progress Pride Flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQIA+ people, and the City of Bothell is committed to supporting their visibility, dignity, and equality in our diverse community. And whereas, though the LGBTQIA+ community continues to be a target of violence, harassment, and discrimination, it continues to thrive through efforts of the community itself and through the support of LGBTQIA+ affirming spaces, community organizations, and individual allies. And whereas, the City of Bothell recognizes that allyship is not merely a label, but an ongoing commitment to actively support and advocate for the rights, lives, and dignity of LGBTQIA+ individuals. And whereas, the City of Bothell recognizes the importance of fostering an environment where all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, feel safe, affirmed, and celebrated for their authentic selves. And whereas, Pride Month provides an opportunity for residents of Bothell to come together in solidarity, celebrate diversity, and reaffirm our shared values of respect, acceptance, and love for one another. Now therefore I, not Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Bothell. Be it resolved that the Progress Pride Flag was raised on June 2 at City Hall to recognize all the LGBTQIA+ community members whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of Bothell a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit.
Thank you. That's right.
My name is Ginger Chin. I represent Eastside Pride, as well as PFLAG. Both of these organizations work to foster unity, celebrate diversity, and build a more just and caring and affirming community. I was thinking about what I would say this evening, and I think I want to go back to some basics. Namely, that PFLAG has an over 50-year history in which it demonstrated that the love of a mother who was courageous enough to walk with her gay son in one of the first pride parades showed the community that courage and joy are contagious. Young people came to her, and family members and parents came to her as well, asking, "How did you do it? How did you overcome the uncertainty and the scowls from your family and community members?" And it was all about love. Today, we know that city happiness indexes are higher when a community is affirming and including. We know that the brilliance of LGBTQ+ people, we can't afford to leave that behind, whether it is the genius that cracked German codes in World War II, or the creative minds that created The Matrix, or the engineers who developed the very techniques for building smart electronic circuits that are stingy on power and make everything that we have today possible. These are the contributions that we can't afford to leave behind, to lose, or to even delay in a world that's more and more complicated, where the challenges that our communities and that you as leaders face become more and more difficult with each passing day. We need everybody to contribute, and the LGBTQ+ community is more than eager to do so. We just need a place. We just need a place to call home, a place where we feel safe to bring our ideas to the table and not have people question where they came from, but simply look at the merits and the value of our contributions, whether it's food, whether it's music, whether it is inventions, whether it's leadership, whether it's just showing compassion. You know, when I look at the world, I know it's changing quickly. My Chinese immigrant family gave me a lot of ideas about the way things had to be, and yet I had to reconcile that with the amazing advances and the ideas that they wanted me to be raised in, in communities in the U.S. And so, I understand that's scary for people. I understand that one way to deal with fear of the future is to just keep things the same and to exclude things that are unfamiliar and frightening. The problem that the families of PFLAG and the community members that support the mission of Eastside Pride, the problem is that such a world that's based on exclusion can only get smaller. Whereas, the world that we want to create for our LGBTQ loved ones and the families and the communities that surround them is one in which we celebrate each other, where the world that we create can only get bigger, and everyone is welcome in it. There is one rule, though. We have to celebrate each other's uniqueness, and we have to be kind to each other. And I think that's the message that Eastside Pride and PFLAG try to drive forward and share through our education, support, and advocacy work, and I see that message reflected in today's proclamation. And I'm proud to accept on behalf of our two organizations and thank the Bothell City Council and Mayor for this proclamation.
Thank you so much. I think we're going to go outside and get a picture next to the flag. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence, and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Washington has the 39th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. with 935 gun deaths every year, a rate of 11.7 deaths per 100,000 people. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves or others. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 6, 2025, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange, the color chosen because hunters wear orange to announce themselves, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life, on June 6 to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim June 6, 2025 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Bothell, and encourage all to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, promote responsible gun ownership, and to honor and value human lives. And I believe we have Chantel? Chantel, sorry.
Yes, we'd love that. Thank you. Okay. Lower this a little bit. Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson. So my name is Shanti Lang. I am the Washington State Elections Lead for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I live right down the street here in Bothell. Moms Demand is kind of mentioned here, but it's a nonpartisan grassroots movement with a chapter in every state. We have over 11 million supporters, and of course, a big chapter here in Washington State. And we're focused on stronger gun laws is really our main focus, and really building a culture of responsible gun ownership. Both of those things can and should coexist. And as it said in the proclamation, every day in the U.S. more than 125 people are shot and killed, hundreds more wounded, traumatized by those events. Gun violence is consistently a top cause of death for children and teens, which is completely So this coming weekend, June 6 through 8, our organization holds a ton of different Wear Orange events to honor survivors and build community and continue to work to end this gun violence. So on a personal note, I have a five and also a three-year-old at home, and so, you know, it's really important to me, especially after Uvalde, you know, there's so many of these traumatic events, to really do something with my grief, and so Moms Demand is a way to do that. And is there anything else that you'd like to mention?
For events that can go to wearorange.org.
Yes, events, if you're interested or just want to learn more, can go to wearorange.org. There's a list of events near us. There's sign waving and flag waving and a bunch of different things that are easy to get involved with. And we're so grateful for this proclamation and the awareness that it brings to our community. And yeah, we're just really grateful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture.
Picture.
The City has accepted public comments in writing as well as sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We do not have anybody signed up, however. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. I am not seeing anybody in the physical audience, but I do have one person online that has raised their hand. So I am going to panel Mr. Swanson in. Mr. Swanson, can you hear me?
I can, city clerk. Thank you very much.
Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Greetings, all. My name's Mark Swanson, and I've been a resident of Bothell since 1991. I rented for three years and then bought my forever home, my tropical island home, if you will, for my retirement and for my parents' retirement, in 1994. Now, I'm not going to waste time with a long diatribe tonight. I'll just simply state that I've been watching the machinations of this city council, the planning commission, and the city staff for quite a while, and I'm sure you all know that I'm very well aware of the various nuances of the political landscape that city council has been over. I object to the intrusiveness of retail in the neighborhoods. Leave them for families, leave them for the elderly homeowners, leave them for the pets, the baby strollers. So I object to putting retail into the neighborhoods. And I also think, in my opinion, that the Bothell City Council, particularly the urbanists on the dais, should consider that they're violating, they may be violating their oaths of office to be impartial. Bothell neighborhoods and families don't want retail in the neighborhoods despite whatever weasel words you use. Thank you.
I don't have anybody else who wishes to speak.
All right, thank you. We will move on to reports. Next up is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council. It's great to be here tonight. We are going to have one staff report with a team of three. I'm going to let them set up, and I have a quick, or maybe two, I have a quick update as they're getting started. This is a bit of a recycle from our last meeting, but at our last meeting, I shared with you that we were going to start seeing some construction activity in downtown related to Festival Street and Main Street, as well as the repair of sidewalks up Festival Street as well. So today, visible evidence of that started, and so we just want to, again, highlight in case there's any questions that come to council or for anybody who's watching at home. So we are doing work currently on 101st Avenue Northeast between Main Street and Northeast 183rd to repair uneven and narrow sidewalks to smooth that out. I was actually, just commented it to me before the meeting. I knew it'd been a three-year problem. I'm hearing that it's decades old. So we're excited to be able to improve that for walkability and meeting ADA standards for our residents who come to enjoy downtown. So we're excited about that. Again, this will be an effort that's going to go through the entire month of June, and we are really on that edge of timing it around 4th of July, where we know a lot of people will come down to Bothell's biggest event, but we have contingency plans, too. But the hope is to have this project completed. In addition to the sidewalk repair, as council is aware, we will be adding removable bollards as well for both Festival Street and Main Street, of which the current barriers will be removed. One thing I also just wanted to note, as we think back now a few years, five perhaps, or I guess three to get to the source of funding, but as you'll recall, the federal government did allocate American Rescue Plan Act funds to communities to both stimulate for businesses and do other projects within the community. And this project is being funded by those funds. So I just wanted to share that with taxpayers, and then, as people may remember, too, from when the contract came before council back in April, we also had the fortune of the winning bid for this project coming in, over $100,000 less than what our estimate was. So we're off to a good start, starting today, and we're looking forward to having the infrastructure in place. With that, we're going to transition in then. We do have an update for council on tenant protections. This is something that council initiated, and then, as you'll be reminded again tonight, our state legislature also had some work in progress. So you're going to hear some updates of the work that has been done in Bothell and some recommendations for moving forward. I'm going to turn things over to our Human Services Coordinator, Anand Mantri Pragada, to introduce the team and to share information. Anand, thanks for being here.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Anand Mantri Pragada, and I'm the Human Services Coordinator for our city. And today, I'm co-presenting alongside.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Sampson. I am a planner with community development here in the city, working on our housing action plan.
And today, we are presenting an update on tenant protections and potential next steps. We are not requesting any formal action from city council tonight. We are only presenting an update on the rent stabilization bill that the state legislature enacted into law in the previous legislative session and share potential next steps. For our agenda today, we'll start with some background, share results of our community engagement on tenant protections, summarize the rent stabilization bill, compare what the state passed with what our regional cities have implemented, along with providing an update on the housing action plan. Following city council directions, staff presented initial findings on the regional trends in tenant protections. After that, we completed the Human Services Needs Assessment Project, which gave us some preliminary feedback from our community members on tenant protections. In the month of December 2024 and January 2025, staff facilitated two focus groups along with renters and landlords. Beyond the focus groups, staff also heard, received feedback via email from community members. Lastly, the state legislature enacted the rent stabilization bill into law in the previous legislative session, which concluded in April 2025. In terms of feedback from our community members, first we heard from our renters, who shared deep concerns on rent increases, not just in our city, but in our region as a whole. There was also strong support for longer notice for rent increases and caps on move-in fees, deposits, and late fees. From our landlords, we heard that tenant protection measures disproportionately impact private small landlords who may own one or two units over corporate companies. There were also questions on whether measures were actually helping renters or placing burdens on small landlords. Next, we have, we're summarizing the House Bill 1217, Improving Housing Stability for Renters. First, we, the state placed a rent increase limit of 7% plus CPI or 10%, whichever is lesser. The limit is 5% for our manufactured housing communities. The notice of rent increase is now 90 days, and for subsidizing housing, that is 30 days. Move-in fees and security deposits are capped at one-month rent, and if the tenant has pets, it's capped at two-months rent. Late fees is capped at 2% of rent in the first month, 3% of rent in the second consecutive month, and 5% rent in the third consecutive month. Council, here we have a comparison of what the state passed into law alongside what our regional cities have enacted. For our regional cities, we looked at the cities of Shoreline, Kenmore, Redmond, Woodinville, and Kirkland. To begin with the rent increase limit, as we spoke earlier, there is a 7% plus CPI or 10% limit on housing, and 5% for tenants subject to the Manufacture or Mobile Home Landlord Act. Notice of rent increases is 90 days as per Washington state law, and across our cities, it's, regional cities, it is 120 days for greater than 3% rent increase, 180 days for greater than 10%. I'd also like to point out that the notice of rent increase prior to Washington, prior to House Bill 1217 was 60 days, and now it is 90 days. Move-in fees and security deposits, as per Washington state law, it's now capped at 1% of monthly rent, and if tenant has pets, it's then capped at 2%. Across our regional cities, the move-in fees is capped at 1% rent. Late fees is capped at 2% of total rent during the first month, 3% during the second consecutive month, and 5% during the third consecutive month. Across our cities, the late fee cap is 1.5% of monthly rent. Prior to the current legislature, there was, there were no moving fees or late fee caps as per Washington state law. After House Bill 1217 passed, tenants are now able to terminate leases. As per state law and in regional cities, there is no provision for lease termination. In our regional cities, landlords can request but not require a social security number, whereas Washington state law does not have any provision in place. Lastly, Washington state law also requires the tenant to acknowledge and take tenant to acknowledge additional fees beyond base rent and optional rent before signing on.
Okay, and a quick update of the housing action plan. So over the past few months, we've been holding study sessions with both city council and planning commission on specifically the housing action plan goals and scoping, as well as housing incentives and middle housing. We are planning on starting community engagement with the project next quarter and are in the process of finalizing an engagement contract with a consultant, but more information will come in the future on that. And within our engagement, we hope to reach out to important stakeholders and community members. We hope in our engagement to have many voices from the Bothell community that reflect the people that live, work, and play in the city.
Lastly, council, there is no formal action requested tonight. We are only providing an update, and we also recommend that in terms of next steps, we continue to assess the impact of the rent stabilization bill and continue to hear from our community members on how this bill has impacted, how this bill has impacted them, and take that feedback, and then come back to council on potential next steps.
Councilmember Kurd?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation and for the follow-up. I know things were happening pretty quickly during the legislative session, and there were times when we were looking to see if there were ways to get involved with the legislature, but I'm glad that you were tracking it. One of the things that I'm wondering about, because we're kind of putting our own internal plans to move forward with tenant protection activities in our own code, would be, how are we publicizing or elevating the state protections in our outreach to community members who are wondering what the, what the updates are? Is it the state that's responsible to communicate with renters? Are there agencies and community organizations here in Bothell that can help spread the word about these protections under law?
I'm not aware of any potential organizations, but in the housing action plan, when we do host community engagement, that'll be an opportunity for us to share what the state has implemented and then take further feedback on whether community members think we need to take further action.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurd, too. I think we'll do some follow-up on that as well.
I think we'll, we'll do some follow-up on that as well, since we did do outreach to the community. We have some mailing lists, and it may make sense to send something out to recap for the people who participated in our, in our forum. So we can talk about that and follow up.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just don't want to drop the loop and have folks who participated in our actions to think that we are leaving them behind. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I wouldn't have thought of that, and I'm glad you did. No, thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate it. And I think, I think we're good from up here. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. That's the end of the city manager report.
All right. In that case, we are going to move to council committee reports, community reports, and Councilmember Curd?
Thanks. For community members who are interested, June is among many other celebrations and recognitions. June is Orca Recovery Month. And we have a couple of different organizations in town that are sponsoring events, whether they're education or restoration activity events. So participated in an event this weekend that was really encouraging and had a large turnout for restoration at the former Wayne Golf Course site. And there's inevitably information online for folks who want to plug in and do some restoration or learn more about orcas and our environment.
Just a quick plug for council, too, so the mayor can get his outfit ready on October, or, excuse me, on June 17th, he'll be reading a proclamation for Orca Action Month, so we'll hear more about it.
I'll figure out what sort of thematic apparel I need for that night, too. Deputy mayor?
I was just going to ask, when are we going to work on the name of the former Wayne Golf Course Park, et cetera, et cetera? Councilmember Dodd seems to have an answer. She laughed at me.
Back, back when I first started, I was told never to talk during council conversations. So now I'm a little worried, but I believe that there's, that part of that effort comes, is coming up. So let me talk to our Parks and Recreation Director and find out. I know there's, I know there's a plan for that. I just don't have the date off the top of my head.
Wasn't the contract on consent two weeks ago?
It could have been.
I think it was.
To talk about naming, though, that's where, like, when the effort of when the community will take place. Let me find out for sure.
Because as you noticed earlier, I had a hard time saying that thing, so I need something easier on my tongue.
Who names their child "former"? It's really confusing.
I just wanted to point out that I remembered something that was on the consent agenda two weeks ago. That was really it. Gold star.
Yeah, I think that was the contract for master planning. And so it ma, it makes sense that, that as we're looking at the golf course as a whole and what we hope it to become in the future, that part of that would be a new name. I'm looking forward to that. But yeah, the city manager can, can, you know, confirm. While I have a mic on, I will also say, I, well, I love going out to, like, the planting events at the, at the golf course there. And I'm sorry that I missed the last one. It's usually the highlight of my month when I can get out there. But also coming up this month, and we, as we proclaimed it Pride Month in Bothell, our first night market is starting not this weekend, but next weekend. And it's going to be a busy weekend, because on the 13th, there is the night market for Pride, the 14th, there's another one for Father's Day, and then also on the 14th, there is the memorial service for a fallen firefighter, Adam Lamb. And so we have opportunities to celebrate and mourn together that weekend, but also to celebrate our dad. So I'm saying that now as a heads up, get ready, but we can also, also, you know, remind the community next week at our meeting as well.
All right. If nobody else has anything to say, I would love to consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Curd to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no. Want to call your name? Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alkabrah?
Yes.
Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Zornz and Mankie absent and excused. And I believe you skipped over the projected agenda discussion. I'm not sure if anybody would wish to discuss that.
Oh, yeah. That's, thank you. We'll do that now. Projected agenda. Would anybody like to discuss something? All right. Seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Dodd?
The deputy mayor wants to talk about the name of the former Wayne Golf Course.
Nothing but snark up here. All right, we're going to move on to appointments. For our business, we have the AWC conference delegates, and we get to select up to three. City manager?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the main highlight there. Thank you, mayor. And in your packet tonight is some further background information. This is becoming probably pretty familiar. We've done this a few times now. The Association of Washington Cities will be holding their annual business meeting on June 26th from 4:00 to 5:45. That takes place concurrent with their annual conference. The, the meeting will be live and in person in, in Kennewak for the, for the conference. We, and then it's also online. So to be a voting delegate, you can participate in person or remotely. We do have one council member who is signed up to attend the conference, that is Councilmember Zornz. And if there's any other questions, I will do my best. The main thing on this is that what we are looking for is up to three council members. That doesn't mean we have to have three council members. And staff will submit their names prior to the deadline of June 16th.
Not everybody all at once. Councilmember Dodd?
Has any, does anybody have, because I'm not sure who I'm looking at. Does anybody know if Councilmember Zornz has indicated that she would like to vote while she is at the conference?
I did confirm with her that she is willing to attend, yes. She'll be there through Friday morning, so she would be available.
Okay. I'm not able to attend in person or virtual, but I, I would start with Councilmember Zornz, since she'll be there and she's okay with it.
One question I have is, it can be up to three, at least one, so, or is there two preferred?
You certainly don't have to vote at all, but yes, you can have up to three. So one, one is sufficient. I think for many years, Bothell, I think, usually had one, but if there's anyone else who's interested in participating, it's always a bit of a challenge in that, I don't know that the agenda for the business meeting is formalized yet, so it's the, you gotta, you gotta commit before you know what you're committing to. But it's generally speaking, I think, a annual budget approving the minutes from the previous year and some nominations.
And I've had the opportunity to attend in the past, but this year, I will not be present in person, and I don't know if there would be an opportunity for me to be virtual, so I would defer to others.
It is the last hour of my workday, is the first hour of this. I am happy to be one of the voting delegates. I can't commit to making the first hour of the meeting. But I could hop on if, if there's a, something that the city cares about in terms of voting, if it's approving the budget and the minutes. I don't think that's something that's going to be terribly controversial.
I'd support that. Do we have a third?
I, I won't be able to make it either online or in person.
Is there anybody that thinks it might be possible if there is something? Because like, if we name the delegates, then we have the option of going, but if we don't name the delegates, then we can't go. And if we name a delegate and they don't go, oh, well.
I don't want to take time off or work for this, but I think I can, I'll, I'll do it. So, fine. Not excited about it, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Curd.
All right. So I think we got Councilmember Zornz, myself, and Councilmember Curd.
Got it. I don't need a vote. That seems clear.
Perfect. Are you sure? Because I was feeling some enthusiasm from this side of the table.
Especially there.
Yeah. All right. Do we want 10 minutes or 15 minutes for a break here? All right, we're going to take a 15-minute break. It is 6:45. We'll be back at 7 o'clock. All right, welcome back. Next up, we have a study session that is year-one review of fire administration inter-local agreement. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. So we're here kind of as a testimony to how quickly time goes by. May 21st of 2024, the city council adopted a resolution that authorized me to sign an interlocal agreement with Shoreline Fire to provide executive services to the Bothell Fire Department, and it was effective on June 1st. And as that day forward, Shoreline Chief Matt Cowan has been the Bothell Fire Chief as well. This action followed a year-long effort of doing analysis to look at a question that had been looming in Bothell for apparently as long as the sidewalk needed to be repaired, so for a decade plus. And channeling Tony Call, I'll just quote too, that again, we, what we brought back to council at the time when we started that journey was every legal option in the state of Washington for what could be done with the, with the fire department. And so with that, what we're doing tonight is we're returning to you to give a one-year review on operations of the fire department following that interlocal agreement being put in action. There's no formal action needed tonight, but at the point of, of moving, taking this step forward, there was an agreement of coming back at year one to give, to give an update. And the fire department being responsive and what they are, we did as, like, as close to on the mark of one year as, as possible. So just as a, a quick reorientation, and this is also in your packet as an attachment, if it's helpful, we do have a fire services area map. The one change that is here from the last year is that you'll note that to our west, the Shoreline Fire Department is now, the, the complete block there, there had been a, an agreement, or the voters approved of emerging of North Shore Fire and Shoreline Fire just earlier this year. So again, just kind of giving a picture, again, one of the statistics that stood out to me in our research over a couple of years ago was that as we did the environmental scan of both Shoreline, or, of, excuse me, of snow home in King County, is there's eight cities left that have a fire department, and Bothell is one of them in both counties. And so what you can see, too, is that there's larger areas, larger departments forming. The fire team can speak more to that as necessary. Just as a quick reminder then, too, some of the overview of what that interlocal agreement was looking to do, it really does provide just that administrative oversight. So again, Bothell Fire is still Bothell Fire. All three fire stations, city of Bothell, our apparatus, our, our teams, our fire crews are all Bothell employees. What we were looking for then is executive oversight, and that includes everything from administration of our agreement with Fire District 10, up in the north end of, of town, working with other city directors, so acting, the fire chief is the fire chief and acts as though any other department director would, reports with me twice a month, and building a relationship then with, with labor and working with Bothell's HR department. So again, the function of the department remains with Bothell, but that oversight, that administrative leadership is coming from, from our agreement with Shoreline. One thing, too, I want to point out, because we did have a time of transition, I actually had this up in my office, so I remember it through the, the purpose. So as we, as we moved into this, we had a bit of a, of a transition. So we had a deputy chief who was promoted to an assistant chief who was, had announced their retirement. That was Deputy Chief Jerry Hughes. And so he stayed on, extended his retirement a second time to help the city in, in leadership and, and stayed in through August. Shoreline then also assigned an assistant chief to be on-site through the end of the year. That was Assistant Chief Orms, who you'll hear from tonight. And then, again, the fire chief was from day one forward. And then also with the transition and retirement of Assistant Chief Hughes, what the city did next then is go out for a recruitment slash promotional opportunity to create a division chief of operations to oversight, oversee the day-to-day operations of the Bothell Fire Department here. And so that transition, what, what helped there was having the assistant chief from Shoreline here, working with the division chief of operations, and really having a smooth transition and aligning interoperations between, between the teams. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to our fire chief to, to introduce his team, but then also walk through the remainder of the presentation, and then we'll be here to answer questions. Chief, if you like that.
All right, well, thank you, and it's great to see you all again. I'll talk for 40 minutes, no. I really want to get to your questions and so forth, so we only have a little bit here that we want to review. Timing can be everything, and we were actually really blessed this last year, as Kyle was alluding to, in being able to have some transition. We had Chief Orms that was going to be the current deputy chief of operations, but our chief of operations at that time, we asked him to delay his retirement by a year. So it really helped to get Chief Orms over here, transition with Chief Hughes, to oversee the day-to-day operations and, and administration and all that, and at the same time to be able to start the process of filling in some of the other structure, which was to promote Division Chief Kelly Cross and Battalion Chief Anthony Savino, to help with the support services side, which you'll, you'll hear a little bit more about later. Go to the next slide. There it goes. A little bit of history, we started the training ILA back in 2020. The training ILA was to join the departments across North King County. A lot of things are led from training, such as the operations and interoperational efficiencies and so forth. So we were intentional with that consortium back in 2020. It really got all of our fire departments across North King County together, and in my opinion, also that partnerships started to lead those successes towards our executive ILA and being able to be, make that fairly seamless as we transitioned, which, as we have just reviewed, was a little over a year ago, back in 2024. One of the things that had come up while we were reviewing the executive services ILA was the talk also about potentially looking at fleet and a couple of other things, such as the vector solutions, which we'll talk about a little bit later as well. The fleet's situation ended up being more prominent for us, and we started addressing it almost immediately, and we're able to get an ILA across the finish line, and we started that in February of this year. We're going to talk, it's important to me that you hear some perspective from, which is why I brought my, my team here today, tonight. I think it's more poignant and impactful to hear from them, who are working directly in those divisions and may have some perspective that can help with, especially when we get to the questions and answering. So I'm asking Chief Orms to lead us through the training ILA. Back then, he was our training chief in that consortium.
Yeah, thanks. So almost immediately after the agreement was formalized, we started delivering more enhanced, more advanced, hands-on training, including live-fire training in buildings that were soon to be demolished. We also increased our, the volume of our technical rescue training from 24 hours a year to 64 hours a year. These are the high-risk, high-visibility emergencies where training really makes a difference. We revamped Bothell's EMS quality assurance program for, for emergency medical services by removing some bottlenecks that had existed. This is really our number-one tool for improving EMS care in the community. We unified some response plans across both jurisdictions to make sure that the right people and the right equipment were going to the right calls. And we improved some fire ground performance, and one that stands out here is the primary search in the context of residential structure fires came down by 30% from 2024 into 2025. And this is really the clearest indicator of how well your firefighters are performing on the streets. Finally, as you can see, response and turnout times have remained stable or are, are improving. We've made some methodology updates that have enhanced the accuracy of how we measure some of these things, and we will keep refining how we track and how we report this.
So next. Sorry. So next, I'd like to have Chief Cross discuss some of the, her perspective on our executive ILA, executive services ILA.
All right. Thank you, Chief. I've had the great opportunity to work here at Bothell for almost 23 years. And in that time, we've seen several rotating fire chiefs and deputy chiefs, which has meant long-term decisions were left to the battalion chief level and company officer level, which made decision-making, planning and budgets very decentralized. During this current ILA, the executive ILA, we've seen this move from decentralized to more centralized. We've conducted financial planning for the current biennium and have seen improved collaboration amongst the leadership. In the first year of the executive ILA, we've seen an improvement in a more stabilized leadership structure. The addition of my position as Division Chief of Ops has provided the ability to manage and supervise day-to-day operations and maintain our 24/7 shift staffing model consistently. In regard to standards and accountability, we've improved our tracking of all personnel qualifications and certifications to make sure they're up to date and they're being maintained. We have updated several administrative and operational policies that were out of WAC compliance and did not align with King County EMS Patient Care Guidelines and NFPA consensus standards. Our representation at the countywide strategic level meetings has also been very beneficial. An example of this is our presence on the King County EMS Advisory Committee. We've seen a lot of benefit from this executive ILA in the last year, and I really look forward to working on steps towards even more improvements. And I'll turn it over to Chief Hoekstein to talk about the fleet ILA.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch base on the categories regarding the fleet ILA that you see up here with some examples of how management, safety, reliability and maintenance have been performing in relation to the ILA. All preventive maintenance work and repairs have been scheduled in-house by Shoreline Fleet and communicated to Bothell staff from the driver position and up. This, this increase in communication has allowed staff to receive vital information, including scheduling, repair status updates, service ticket updates and estimated apparatus return to service dates as well. The Shoreline Fleet Manager also traveled with the Bothell Fire Ladder Committee to Pierce in Wisconsin earlier this year to assist with the development of the spec for the new ladder. This partnership has ensured that the mechanical components of that ladder truck are developed in a way that is, streamlines maintenance of the apparatus moving forward. Repairs of apparatus are either addressed in the shop at Shoreline or our mechanics drive to Bothell for smaller repairs. There was a one incident, incident a couple of months ago that a Bothell engine actually broke down on a call out, out on the street on a weekend. And our mechanics were able to respond to that engine in our fleet shop truck and make the repairs on scene and have that engine back in service on a weekend in two and a half hours, and that rig was back, back, back operational. Shoreline mechanics also recently inspected the existing Bothell ladder truck, the Sutfin truck, and helped create a refurbishment scope of work to extend that unit's lifespan by a few years. All 14 Bothell response apparatus are currently being fully maintained by the Shoreline Fleet Maintenance Division with full compliance of NFPA guidelines. And additionally, all service tickets that were left over at the date of the ILA transition have been forwarded to our fleet maintenance and are being addressed as rigs cycle through the shop. So there was a good handoff between the Bothell Fleet Services and Shoreline. This has also included some older issues that are now being addressed, including some leaks from the engine cab roofs and repairs to air conditioning systems, which heading into summer will obviously be a good thing. So that's what I have right now. Chief, back to you.
I did it again. So one of the things that is super important to me is to make sure that, that we're developing a good relationship with our, our employees and our personnel. That is our lifeblood. That is the, you know, some people will say that that is your most critical asset. And then not actually, you know, prove that up. And that's, that's not who I am. And so when I came over, that was something that was important to me to strengthen the relationships and, and reset on some of the teamwork aspect, and, and Chief Cross even talked to that a little bit when she spoke. So it was important to me to get back and make sure that they understood who I am and what I'm about. And so we did chief chats and other meetings and interactions and so forth so that I can make sure that I was, you know, hearing what the concerns were, if they, if there were concerns. It was absolutely humbling and refreshing to have the excitement that, that I heard from all of our employees. The excitement about us coming, Shoreline coming over and helping out with executive services, the opportunities that arose with that, that, you know, future opportunities. And so we continue to focus on strengthening the relationships that, that we have and being able to build on that. And I know that, that if you ask any of the people in it, you know, not only the firefighters, but administrative staff as well, that this has worked out, you know, beyond what I had anticipated, you know, as far as the excitement and support. It's really been humbling for me. And I'll finish with some, some future opportunities or possibilities, some of which may be a little bit easier to, to accomplish than others. But I'll start with the remodeling of Station 44. That's been in progress or a priority for many years. It's in progress now. We have an architect and engineering firm on, on contract. They're doing the design phase. We're hoping to break ground late this year, early next year. That will be not only a big upgrade and, and update to that station, but it'll also allow for us to upstaff at that station if we have the, the staffing and, and the need to be able to run an engine and an aid car out of there. It's not a busy station, but having that capability is, is an important step for the future. One thing that we had talked about even before, and, and I attended remotely your conversations about the RFA, and I would agree, it was very robust conversations. But even before you, you all were talking about the RFA and, and the possibility of an executive ILA, Chief Eisen and I, and, and even Chief Crone before, started talking about whether other ways to partner. And one of the things that we had talked about was jointly staffing a heavy rescue out of Kenmore. We have one on order, and if you haven't heard the stories, it's many, many years to get these things. But we're probably about a year and a half out, maybe two, to getting it. And one of the things that we had talked about was maybe one person from Bothell and one person from Shoreline to be dedicated staffing on that, that heavy rescue. And it's still a possibility. We have a medium rescue there now. There are not any heavy rescues north of, or in the area, in the immediate area at least. So this would be a big improvement in our capabilities in the north end. Yes.
Can you walk us through what that would be used for?
I'm sorry, what, what would it be used for?
What's a heavy rescue truck?
Okay, so thank you. Yeah, sometimes I get sideways with not thinking about the terminology. Heavy rescue is typically, I mean, the first thing that pops to mind is the, the rescue, the technical rescues that it can go on. Where in all hazards fire department, we do, you know, as far as the technical rescues, we do confined space, trench, high-low angle, you know, water rescues, things of that nature, structural collapse, things of that nature. And that heavy rescue is a, it's a big toolbox for us on those types of calls. However, there's also added benefits. Not only do they have the specialized training in those areas, but even on major, on other major calls, structure fires or major car wrecks, they're, they've got extra extrication tools and, and they bring a, a, not only personnel, but other specialized equipment to some of those bigger incidents. Now also with our exposure to light rail, that they have some specialized tools for that as well to be able to lift the, the train, you know, to, to do rescues and fires and so forth. But it's really an advantage because it can go on a multitude of different types of calls with some staff and some specialized training or equipment. That's a great question. Thank you. Let's see. Expanded MIH, which stands for Mobile Integrated Healthcare. And we've had a team for years, and we are looking at expanding later this year, and especially in 2026 with some of the improved revenues that we're hoping to get with the passing of the King County EMS levy this fall. But one of the things that we're looking at doing is improving our on-scene support of crews. And then also with improved connections with our clients, we do a lot of referrals through the crews that are out on the calls, and then give the referrals back to our team that do follow-ups daily, weekly and so forth. And then that integration, we, I've already had conversations with the Connection Health Solutions, their clinic about how we can better integrate with them, and then also with the racer program as well as we look at being more holistic with our approach. So this, we're on the cusp of doing some more expanded care and with our MIH team. And then under, still under services and, and operations, we're looking at what we can do in the future for improving service levels in South Bothell. This has been something that's been on the radar for years, at least what I'm being told. There's anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800 calls that are being done in the south end and with limited access across the slough, and, and we experienced that with, with the, the bridge and so forth, as you all know. So that is something that we should be looking at, you know, in the near, near future, you know, to expand what we do there. And that would also greatly improve what we call the reliability or the performance out of Station 42. 42 is a, is a busier station. If we had another station that could remove some of the workload off of that station, it would be very helpful. Moving into some of the efficiencies, one of the things that Chief Hoekstein had talked about as far as, you know, our, our fleet services and so forth, one of the things that would be nice is if we were able to model our fire station, fire engine, sorry, after one another and align them with the way that they're set up. If we could do that with our hose and our equipment and then get the training so that the cross-training between our firefighters, we can start sharing reserve apparatus. This becomes a bigger issue, especially just recently. We had a reserve fire engine here in Bothell that had some major repair work that was needed. And if we, we needed to do it because we needed that reserve for at least another few years, but if we were able to share some of that apparatus, that would have relieved some of the pressure off that, which would not only save money and workload and so forth, but improve overall efficiencies. And then still under efficiencies, we had the, a study session about the vector solutions. We're making some, some great progress, you know, on that, even just in the last few days. Aligning our staffing, vector solutions as a reminder is our staffing program is to replace the firetrucks that is in place now. And this would allow the day shift battalion chiefs in Shoreline to help manage the staffing levels here and improve that, that program and accountability. There's great alignment that would occur with, as I mentioned, with the, the fire engines, but now we're talking about personnel, about having the same or similar CBAs, the contracts and, and policies. And then finally, under leadership, we do have, expect some, anticipate some transition next year here in Bothell with some of our leadership. But my team here, we're, we're around for a while, as long as you like us. And, and we do bring a wealth of experience and knowledge. And stabilizing, as Chief Cross talked, spoke to, stabilizing that leadership across all of our divisions is, is super important to not only being efficient and financially efficient, but logistically efficient and how it impacts our operations. So we're here and, and should be able to provide that leadership moving into the future. And with that.
Yeah, that brings us to the, to closing slide. We can go forward one more. But just as a, as a reminder then, council, as we went through this journey, it was really a reflection of the growing complexity and size of Bothell. I think we heard some of the themes of that in terms of how we operate, the scalability of having a, a larger department with more resources. There's some advantages to that. So we're hearing some of the, the pieces of where even under this agreement, that's taking place. But ultimately, where I wanted to leave this to is that when we talked about whatever we did moving forward, the recommendation that, that staff was going to bring forward was going to be with the highest priority being on providing the best solution for possible service to the public and as well as then honoring our fire department personnel, which was something that, that council added on to our, to our objective as we went forward and again, had that conversation with staff before the decision was done. And I think that really set a stage for when Chief Cowan went out and spoke to them. So we were, we're hopeful that tonight's overview gives you a snapshot of then what has taken place so far. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I, I do have questions, but I am also just very grateful that you're here and that you presented the presentation the way that you did. I think it was very straightforward, and I hope it's, it's helpful for members of the community to see kind of, you know, where we've been, where we're at and, and what's possible in the future. So you'll, if you get to know me, I ask nerdy questions. I'm sorry. So some data kind of points that would be helpful to me to understand sort of the context of all of this. Are there cities that are smaller than Bothell that have a city-run department? Looking at that map, I didn't get time to figure out populations.
I think as we, as we were doing the analysis, I can remember two to three, Muckeltoo is one example. I don't think they make it on our map. And then I think you start looking out more towards Snoqualmy, but Chief, you probably know this.
Certainly not any municipal fire departments. There are some fire districts, you know, that still operate that are smaller, that are, not have the call volume or, or the need for, you know, greater staffing levels and so forth. I, I don't know of a municipal fire department except for Snoqualmy, which is a one-station, you know, fire department. Other than that, I think everybody, you know, consolidation is not only something that is a little bit newer here in King County. It's something that's going on in counties around us. It's going on in states around us. It's, it's growing for many of the reasons that I'm not going to be trying to be redundant that you've already discussed and, and reviewed. But the, even two-station fire departments are really, there's still quite a bit of movement, you know, to, to join and, and get those efficiencies.
That is helpful. Thank you. And then when you discuss the, the agreements that Bothell has had with Shoreline, I'm wondering, like, please correct my understanding, don't we also contract with Shoreline for EMTs and the mobile health? Are those kind of a separate category somehow?
For the MIH or for ALS?
EMTs for ALS.
For ALS, okay, so.
But then also, I thought we were working with them on the mobile response as well.
Correct.
Okay.
So we are partners. I'll start with the MIH. We are partners with the MIH. You contribute dollars every year to help us with the, the staffing and the other expenses for our MIH team, along with Snow 10 as well. And that's just, that's just a straight partnership. We do have an agreement on that. I, I didn't put that up there because it wasn't one of more of our recent ILAs, so I probably should have actually in retrospect. The bigger contract with, for our ALS services are with the paramedics. That is through King County. We are a subcontractor of the county. And so the King County EMS levy, as I had mentioned before, that's coming up in the fall, is to reauthorize that levy that's county-wide, that predominantly pays for paramedic services, but it does other things too. We get a little bit of money for the MIH. We get some money to help support the BLS side of our operations, so EMTs. We do get some money for that as well, but predominantly that King County EMS levy pays for paramedics. And then we, we are a subcontractor and have been since the late 70s with the, the county as, as that subcontractor, along with, there's, there's a few other providers around the whole county. You know, Seattle and, and South King County being the biggest ones, but Bellevue and Redmond also have programs.
How long has Bothell been received, like had that, that partnership for those services?
For ALS?
Yeah.
Interestingly enough, there was another service back in the day. I'm sorry, I don't have the year. Do you know Evergreen?
Yeah, early 2000s.
Early 2000s. There was another program working. Early 2000s, there was another program working out of Evergreen Hospital. And that served, you know, Kirkland, Redmond, and 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 some of Bothell and Windville at that time. When that service dissolved and we absorbed a medic unit along with the that was when the Redmond program started up, was was initiated. Redmond didn't have a program before that. That was part of that dissolution.
That is helpful context. Then I think you answered my question on you mentioned, you know, opportunities to improve service levels to South Bothell. I think our answer are like, from like what I've heard from the community is yes, please. But I wanted to know the how, and you answered that with a potential future station in South Bothell. And that that's definitely a lift for our community, but it makes sense to figure out how to make it happen. And then the last question I have was when you mentioned that that firefighter feedback has been positive around the executive agreement, I'm wondering, like, how was that feedback gathered? Is there like a formal process that you have of of like finding out or how do you receive that feedback from staff?
That's a great question. And and we discussed it, was there any data that I could show and so forth? The the feedback is fairly anecdotal in in that I have asked specifically of say, the union leadership, I'm like, I really want to know, you know, if you're doing any polls or surveys of your of your of your representative employees, you know, any feedback, anything that that we can do. That is part of the reason, too, of the face-to-face with during chief chats, so that people feel more comfortable actually saying. And people were fairly comfortable with saying whatever they wanted to say, you know, but you know, it's it's mostly anecdotal than anything else. I've also, you know, had some discussions with some of our HR staff of like, you know, how does how does has there been an increase or decrease? And they've they've said it's a dream, you know, quote unquote. Again, not data, but you know, personal feedback, you know, at a relational level that that we've been able to garner. And I don't know, maybe Chief Cross has, I mean, she's been around here for a couple of years, and might have some a better conduit of of any of that feedback.
Yeah, I would just agree that a lot of it is my face-to-face interaction with the crews out on on the streets, boots on the ground. I try to get out to all the stations and touch base very often, and all the feedback I've gotten has been very positive. A lot of thank yous, a lot of morale is great, you're doing a great job, keep it up. And it's been it's been very good right now. So I can just it is, it's just feedback from going out and having those conversations.
And I think heading into the agreement, one of the things that when Chief Reisen and Deputy City Manager call, we're going out to meet with crews, too. One of the one of the biggest themes is around stability is what people were looking for. And again, that's where I think we we amended our speaking point of saying for the last 10 years, Bothell has been considering what to do with the future of the fire department. And I think they were corrected several times. It's like 20 years. So there's definitely, I think that that was kind of the basis of where we started from is personnel was looking for for stability and of what comes next, whatever the answer is, let's find out. And I think, again, and there's, while while we're just one year in, that's certainly not a long duration, but I think people are feeling confident in the the decisions have been made. I think there is a big attribution to that of Chief Cross of having somebody who understands the department, being here and running the day-to-day operations. And and definitely, I think her her perspective and her leadership voice in this has been a a key ingredient to providing that stability that people were looking for. So want to make sure to give that that compliment as well.
Yeah, I really appreciate, you know, you taking the time to really be face-to-face with people and 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 hear them. You're right, I would have appreciated a survey, whether, you know, if if union leadership does it or if it's coming from the executive team. I I do think that it can be useful to communicate to the public, like, the like part of the, you know, why did we do that? Because we're seeing positive results here, some of the positive results that we can demonstrate. So, you know, if you were to do a survey, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
You're too.
I had to to get nerdier about Councilmember Aldrich's question. With, it's interesting to me that you said that Shoreline is a subcontractor for King County for ALS. Is it, did we choose Shoreline or did we get assigned for proximity, like, quickly? Because I realize that's not the focus, but like, how did that match happen?
You didn't have a choice.
Okay. I was I was wondering, I, yeah.
So King County has an overreaching responsibility to provide. That's one of the things that they have to provide is the ALS services, the paramedics across. And so they have they have the ultimate authority. They can take away our ability to provide ALS services. They'd have to replace it with something else. But they strategically look at where the distribution of the units are and if we have to move units at all for some ever reason, there's a process that we have to go to. So they 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 do have that authority.
Okay. I was just curious. I didn't realize, I think, until this exact meeting that it was a subcontractor thing.
So just to be clear for everybody, we have a medic unit here at 42. We have a medic unit in at Station 57 in Lake Forest Park, and we have one in in Shoreline. So three units.
Cool. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I just I was trying not to forget that question. I really appreciate that you're all here and talking to us about this.
I'll echo that sentiment. It's really important that all of you showed up here tonight, even though it might seem like extra people, extra, just gave one slide or something, but I really appreciate all of you being here. And the relationship building that you each are doing in the department and also with us and with the community is not going unseen. So thank you for that. It's been really important and has helped kind of allay some of my concerns going into this without any context before when I was first elected and dropped into it. So thank you for working with me. And a couple of highlights that that stood out to me, the participation in the King County EMS levy, I think, was really important. Chief, former Chief Reisen had a lot of opinions, and they were important to kind of consider and bring and elevate because the EMS levy in King County is kind of a gold standard. And it was important to not overreach in that in that process. And I think there were possible ways for that levy to grow and just kind of ride on the coattails of previous successes. But I really appreciate Bothell stepping up and and having a voice to really make sure that the the voters are going to see key improvements in service for for the EMS levy. So that's been really important. I really appreciate us continuing there. I really liked the spiral-bound notes that one of you dropped off for each of us last two weeks ago. And seeing the highlights of the department over the last year has been really, really encouraging. I'm really proud that we do wild-end deployment. That's something that, like, seeing Bothell step up is so it's just, I'm so proud of the department for doing that and for really setting setting the tone there. There is a page in here that talks about response times. And I think without any context, it might look a little more alarming than it needs to be. So I'm wondering if you could maybe provide a little bit more clarification or like, the line is going to adjust up and down a lot. It's just going to vary, right? When is the threshold concerning? And and what what are the impacts to our insurance, to our, to the services being provided to the community? What can you provide a little bit more context around those numbers?
Sure, I'm going to kick this over to Andres here in a second, but thank you. And I and, you know, I failed to mention, too, that I'm only as good as as the team that I have around me and unstretched, unstretched as, you know, to to be the, you know, a fire chief. I rely on these guys, you know, super heavy. And and I and I failed to mention this, but, you know, Chief Arm sees oversees operations for both departments but works, you know, closely and directly through through Kelly, you know, to represent the Bothell. And and Chief Hokesign does the same thing with Battalion Chief Anthony Savino, you know, for support services. So thank you for recognizing it. And they're here to answer the questions that I can't answer as well. I will say that, you know, from a strategic level, when we start seeing, we have growth that's going on. This impact, not only is the growth, you know, you know, bring financial, you know, you know, prosperity potentially, but it also brings more people, more calls and so forth. And we have to be thinking about those things. And so when we talk about South Bothell, that that is a factor in that. When we have response times that start to climb, when we have reliability issues with stations that the apparatus aren't there, because our response times are only good if they're in those those stations. So that is a concern. And, you know, what you were talking about as far as how is the impact, you know, our our residents and our taxpayers, WSRB, the Washington State Rating Bureau, does an evaluation of the fire department and the services that we provide. And if we're not if we're not performing well, then our rating drops, and that does directly impact the different, the insurance rates and so forth. So do you want to address the response times?
Yeah, and I guess I would start by reassuring you that our response times are not in a range that are going to have an impact on our WSRB rating. We are well within, we are well within the bounds. There's a few things that impact response times, distance to travel, subsequent calls. We started earlier in this year a process of of ensuring that the things that we were measuring here were being measured correctly. I think the alarming thing that you might have seen was methodology change in measuring of the the arrival of the first engine to a structure fire. We had been measuring just travel time, and we started measuring from time of dispatch, which is compliant with the consensus standard NFPA 1710. And so that's what drove the the change. When you remove the turnout time, which is what it's called, then it obviously flattens that line and smoothes it out. So there's still some work, I think, that we have to do to make sure that everything is, that the data is clean. But at this point, I think we're we're finding, we're finding a good, a good path forward.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I know in the document that you sent and is in our packet again tonight, there's a lot of text underneath it that explains it, but I'm knowing just if someone in the community is seeing nine minutes, 50, 51 seconds to 11 minutes, that's like, whoa. But it it's helpful to know that that, you know, the methodology methodology change is behind that and that there's nothing really to be concerned about for our rating. So that's great. One of the questions that I was wondering about and that has stuck with me throughout this process, because one of the things I value about Bothell, Bothell's existing service is our our attention to detail and permitting and the kind of, dare I say, local control in front of my fellow council members, but the local control of being able to have in-house folks embedded with the city, helping to interpret code for our for our city. And with new development, new permits, that's a big task that personnel are involved in. And I'm wondering, have there been any changes or have there been any, like, possible efficiencies that that this contract has kind of brought forward or maybe made more apparent about the permitting process?
You're, the Fire Marshal's Office here is the same as it always has been. And we have a little bit of experience with this now with the three other cities, the, you know, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, and Kenmore. And I that'll never change, that local interaction and can and collaboration with the cities, because that's super important. And so there are nuances between the different cities, depending on which, you know, codes you're adopting and so forth. But and that won't ever change, that that relationship will always be there. But one of the things that is a benefit that we have found at the Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore piece of it, is the the workload of adopting when you go through code adoption and compliance, which is every three years? I think it's every two, two, three years, three years, I think. And the workload of making sure that and the alignment of, because as you know, there are things that change almost, you know, annually, you know, from a state code, whether it's the the fire code or the business code or building code, et cetera. So we see that as a big advantage.
Great. Yeah, that's good context to have as we proceed with this current contract and thinking about the future, too. The last thing that I wanted to bring up, and this is maybe more for city executive staff, is that we have a safety, safe and secure levy that's currently going forward. And it'd be helpful to to keep that information updated. I noticed on the website, it hasn't been updated since maybe 2021, 2022. And it'd just be helpful to continue to message what the benefit of that levy is providing for for the community, especially in terms of all this other data that's coming out and that we're we're tracking. So it could be helpful for transparency.
That's great. I'll talk to anybody with the name Chief. Actually, I have check-ins with both of them tomorrow, so we'll talk about that a little bit. One thing in terms of especially of talking about our confidence of our community that I wanted to highlight as well, because we've been talking about King County a lot with that advanced life service. And we went through this a couple of years ago, but just as a reminder for everyone, and if you're watching at home, since we are one city in two counties, we need to sign. I like quoting my council members, especially when we're five on five, got to keep the peace. But we we do have then a lagging request that we go out to Snohomish County residents as well about matching the service that's received through the King County levy. And so just as a as a quick reminder, when we went back out two years ago, we had a 73% passage rate of Snohomish County residents like us who were looking to maintain that level of service. So it really is some of the best in the country, and we're fortunate to have that service extended, whether subcontracted or however selected here in Bothell.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think the thing that I appreciate the most about the last year is what I have heard in and around the community and rumblings around the fire department, which is nothing. And and that is absolutely lovely, because when something's working well, like, I don't get those weird phone calls and I don't hear, hey, so-and-so said this thing. And like, I don't hear like a lot of those things. And like, it's just been quiet. And I think like, like, and I, please don't take this the wrong way, but like, sometimes like, I forget we have a fire department because it's just not among like the things that people come to me and talk about. And I appreciate that, because a lot of people come to talk to me about a lot of things. And I remembered we had a fire department, though, when we we had a firefighter on the front page of the Seattle Times, helping somebody else down in California. So that was pretty cool, too.
Mayor, can I translate for you?
Yeah, please.
No news is good news.
Yeah. I like that. That's good. So no, I I there've been great questions around the table tonight. I don't have any more. I just want to say thanks. This has gone really well. It's been lovely. And I echo Councilmember Curd's appreciation that y'all came here and chatted with us tonight. Like, I, trust me, I'm well aware that, like, giving up evenings to come to this meeting is not like super high on everybody's list, but it's true. It's gorgeous. So just just thank you. And it, from my end, everything appears to be running really well.
And if you, if you want to bring up South Bothell, South Bothell resident, so forgot about the fire department.
The southest.
The southest. It's true.
Yeah, the mayor can't be more south, or we lose him entirely. I also wanted to just remember that I had said in our one-on-one today with the city manager that I really appreciated having the annual report in the agenda, and I I enjoy every year looking through it. But the one of the big takeaways that I got from it was, what's up with lithium-ion batteries setting houses on fire? Would you like to say anything about that?
Sure. Actually, kind of back to that heavy rescue, you know, conversation, some of those specialized tools. We do have hazmat techs, you know, here in the city, and we are looking at what that future, I didn't put it up there as future possibilities, because we do have them now. We're not sure what we need to do to address it, but that is in our future. We're experiencing it already. We we bought a a blanket and then used it and and it worked. But the these are, these are in the future. They're here. We do. But the, these are, these are in the future. They're here. We do have to prepare for them. And, and that does take some specialized tools and equipment.
On that note, too, in all seriousness, with, with Bus Base North coming to Bothell, we have already, in our emergency management team, we've already started conversations with Sound Transit and our partners. I had requested that in a meeting a couple of months ago of, let's start talking about planning for what could happen now with that building a couple of years into the future. So that'll be a conversation that we all, they just hired somebody that will be our point of contact. And those are plans that we'll certainly be working on heavily over the next few years.
One, one of the things that I would add to is that we're trying to focus right now, all of our TRTs, our technical rescue technicians, in, at Station Fifty-One, where that heavy rescue, where the medium rescue is now, where the heavy rescue is. We're kind of almost working towards it like as a special operations, you know, station, which could potentially house, you know, a hazmat unit or something like that. And we're also looking at some other things, you know, such as like maybe a boat, you know, for, for the lake and so forth, too. So that is definitely on our radar.
You know, I love a plan. Is there some sort of regular cadence or something that would spur? Let's say, you know, Sound Transit buys a new kind of electric bus with a, some kind of new battery that I'm not going to make up a name for, because all of my metaphors lately have been pizza related and doesn't really translate. But how would they let the city know? Like, what kind of planning goes into that? And how often do we review that plan?
So we have a great relationship with Sound Transit. I have regular meetings with their teams. That would probably trigger things anywhere from, if they had to put in new infrastructure, we would know through permitting. We would know through quarterly meetings that take place. We would know through watching Sound Transit board agendas. But, but my, my confidence is, is if they were considering that, that they would contact us ahead of time and work out plans. So I think we have a few failed states. And to continue quoting my own council members, the slow deliberate pace of government will be in our favor.
It was leisurely gate. And I was really proud of that one. I think not, we don't have a base here, but we do still have metro and community transit buses. So same thing, where like we see either that they're doing something new or they tell us and, okay. Fun stuff.
Well, and to that end, like all the biomedical device manufacturers in Bothell, too. I mean, it goes beyond just buses, but there's so many other potential risks that are out there.
I can only process the anxiety over public agencies' fire risks. Once we get into businesses, there's a lot of potential fires.
Professionals know.
That's why we're really glad that we have the four of you and everyone you work with.
I just want to say thank you, and to the others' points for the leadership to be here. It's, it's, I've been, this is my fourth year and it's, I think, the first time I see the bosses all in one room together. So it's amazing. So thank you, thank you all for this. I, I, I think we'll, this is a great overview. I, no news is good news, I guess, so which is, which is great. It's like, I hate to say this, but it's like plumbing, if it's working, nobody cares. But if it breaks, everybody will start screaming. So that's his, yeah.
Not only fleet, but the plumbing too, but you know, as long as it's working, everybody's happy.
Yeah, well, as soon as something breaks, yeah, yeah, you're not going to hear the end of it, I know. So no, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. I have some questions, but I think we'll discuss them as they arise in the future. So I appreciate you all being here.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. It's a pleasure to be working with you all and for us to be here. So thank you.
All right, it's seven fifty-four. We are going to come back to the next study session at eight oh five.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We have our second of two study sessions tonight. And we're, we're shifting gears into more familiar conversations. And that has to do with continuing on from our Conference of Plan Work, conveniently called Phase Two. I'm going to turn things over to our, our Deputy Director of Community Development first, I believe, Christian Gadsden. We'll let him kick it off.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. We are on, in the final stretch of the Phase Two amendments. Jaclyn's going to run through where we are, where we've been, some of the items that have, have fallen off along the way, but we will come back to them in the future, based on discussions that we've had here and with the Planning Commission. And then looking forward to our next steps with the public hearing and, and ordinance. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jaclyn.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Again, I'm Jaclyn. I'm a planner with the community development here in the city. And today I'll be talking about the Phase Two Code Amendments. All right, so no action required today. We're simply just looking for feedback from City Council on the draft code materials for the Phase Two Code Amendments, as well as the findings, conclusions and recommendation from Planning Commission. All right, so the purpose of the Phase Two Code Updates is to align the Bothell Municipal Code with the city's values and vision around future development, as highlighted in twenty twenty-four Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. So once the comprehensive plan was adopted by City Council last December tenth, staff started having study sessions with Planning Commission and City Council from February up to last week. Through these different study sessions, City Council and Planning Commission have decided to add neighborhood scale commercial usage in residential zones, move FAR or floor area ratio, law coverage and overlated zone cleanup off of the Phase Two Code Updates and to be added on a later work plan. And we've also added removing minimum off-street parking regulations and maximum building coverage, updating the variance processes and updating comprehensive plan amendment processes. On May twenty-first, Planning Commission held a meeting with staff to review the draft findings, conclusions and recommendations for the Phase Two Code Updates. Planning Commission approved the drafts with no revisions. So on the screen, I have our discussion questions for today. They're also located in your packet. I have the slide again at the end of the presentation, so we can revisit at the very end. So first I'll be talking about neighborhood scale commercial. We're proposing neighborhood scale commercial options, because the twenty twenty-four Comprehensive Plan supports small-scale retail throughout the city. To guide this, we're using the Department of Commerce's recommendations. And at the April eighth meeting, City Council supported staff and Planning Commission's recommendation to go ahead and follow those commerce guidelines. These changes can be seen in the Definitions Chapter in the Municipal Code, eleven oh two zero six zero, and the Permitted Uses Chapter, which is twelve oh six. On June tenth, there will be a presentation from staff on the city's Economic Vitality Plan. So when we talk about neighborhood scale commercial, we're not just talking about buildings. We're talking about building economic vitality into our neighborhoods. That means supporting small businesses, giving residents convenient access to everyday goods and services, and creating spaces where local economies can grow right alongside housing. It's about making sure our neighborhoods are not just places to live, but places to thrive. Development and economic vitality really go hand in hand together. And city staff are actively communicating throughout these project processes to work together on these topics. So we started by recommending that commercial space be limited to thirty percent of the net billable area of a lot. This keeps things proportional. Larger lots can support slightly larger commercial spaces, while smaller lots don't get over, don't get overwhelmed. But Council did raise a good point at our last meeting in April, that on very small lots, thirty percent might not be enough for a functional commercial use. So we added a minimum, so commercial space must be at least eighteen hundred square feet or thirty percent of a lot, whichever is greater. This helps ensure small lots still allow usable commercial spaces. On the flip side, we wanted to avoid oversized commercial spaces on very large lots. So we set a maximum cap of two thousand five hundred square feet. So no matter how, no matter how big the lot. This matches state's guidance and keeps the scale appropriate for neighborhoods. To test this, we looked at the average parcel size in the zones where this type of development is allowed, excluding parcels over an acre. So those numbers can be seen on that chart on the right. What we found is that for most parcels, thirty percent of the lot size naturally hits or exceeds the two thousand five hundred square feet cap. So in most cases, commercial spaces will top out at that limit. So in short, this approach gives flexibility for smaller lots, prevents oversized development on large ones and keeps neighborhood commercial uses truly scaled to the neighborhood. All right, so next we'll talk about parking. Since twenty twenty-two, the city has been discussing potential changes to parking requirements with growing interest in reducing minimums in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Senate Bill five one eighty-four, which was signed by the governor back on May seventh, twenty twenty-five, this bill highlighted on the screen, kickstarted our work on reimagining our off-street parking requirements. So City Council has expressed sustained interest since twenty twenty-three in eliminating off-street parking. Minimums city-wide didn't want to explore what this would look like for the code. Staff have prepared proposed code updates to, one, remove off-street parking minimums, and two, address ripple effects on related requirements. So this includes bicycle parking and rideshare parking. With this updated code, we hope to get City Council's feedback on if the city should move forward with going beyond Senate Bill five one eighty-four and remove off-street parking minimums. So currently bicycle and rideshare parking are tied to, tied off to off-street parking minimums. So staff drafted revised code using examples from peer cities. So bike parking and rideshare are calculated independently from off-street parking minimums. So for bike parking, we use Bellingham's Code as reference, as they don't have off-street parking minimums. And they have a bike code that illustrates how bike parking should be calculated and how parking facilities should be designed. And for rideshare parking, we opt to use the current code. So the current code states that one spot for every twenty required off-street parking spots for a business that has employees working six hours or more, and recommend that for any site that still proposes off-street parking, that they are required to have one rideshare space per every twenty proposed spaces. And then parking management has also been on the radar for the city. And currently, multiple departments are working on finding solutions to create improvements to ensure cars are not parked illegally. All right, maximum building coverage. As of January first, twenty twenty-five, we updated the development regulations to increase maximum building and hard surface coverage to meet new zoning and land use goals. Since these standards are still new, no further adjustments are currently needed. City Council also supported the Planning Commission's recommendation to eliminate maximum building coverage and rely only on maximum hard surface coverage. So this simplifies the code, gives projects more flexibility and makes reviews easier. So no changes are proposed to the current hard surface limits in Bothell Municipal Code twelve fourteen zero three zero. And these changes affect a couple of different sections. Included are twelve fourteen, twelve fifty-two zero four zero, twelve fifty-eight one three zero and twelve sixty-six zero six zero. And then administrative amendments. So the, the Phase Two Code Updates are also, also cover a few administrative amendments that will clarify processes and definitions in the Bothell Municipal Code. For variance criteria, we clarified some material and cleaned it up a bit more. Private octane process was, there was, we provided more clarity within the code, as well as provided more clarity on what net billable area was defined as. Okay, so for next steps, staff will refine any updates based on City Council's feedback tonight. And then we will have our public hearing on the Phase Two Code Updates on June seventeenth. If we don't receive any comments on June seventeenth, staff are preparing to have the Phase Two Draft Code Ordinance ready for City Council's consideration on the same day. And then final ordinance potentially by July. So again, tonight, we don't have any action required but from City Council. We're merely just getting feedback and guidance on the drafted amendments. So here are our questions for tonight. Is there interest in refining or adjusting any of the recommended draft edits? Do the findings reflect City Council's vision for future development? And are there any suggested adjustments to the drafted off-street parking code, eliminating parking minimums? Thank you.
I'd love to go at the first question as it relates to neighborhood scale retail. But also, thank you for all the work that went into this. This is, this is a lot. And, and a variety of topics for you all to cover and prepare for tonight. And so thank you for everything that went into it. When it comes to, and if you want to go back to the, the minimum slide for, for the retail, I'm thinking of our pop shops and how clearly a small retail space can be quite small. And I'm, so I, I wanted to just bring that up and say, I'm not entirely sure that a minimum size is needed, because that could really be up to the retailer to, to say, this is what's useful to me and this is what I'm, this is what's possible. This is what I can do. And so I don't know if we want to limit the type of retail to something that has to fill eighteen hundred square feet, if it could be smaller. I don't mean to explode the work that you're doing. I don't know all of the implications of that suggestion. I don't know if this means that we're going to have, you know, sheds popping up in people's friends' yards and saying, this is my retail space. I, I don't know. But I, I do really love to, like, go with the energy of our, of our neighbors as they show us what's possible. And so I don't want to make it harder for them or limit them, because there's this random eighteen hundred square feet number. So I actually think that our minimum could be much smaller. And please, you know, tell me, I'm not saying right now, but at some point, come back with, what are the implications of that suggestion? But then I will leave it to others and you can come back around to me.
So I'm going to jump in, because I had a question about that. Is the eighteen hundred square foot minimum the smallest maximum? Or is it a minimum maximum? Or is it like a minimum square footage?
Yeah, the, the eighteen hundred square feet is the, is the, the lar, the, the smallest maximum, yes. So, so if somebody wanted to propose a three hundred square foot, that's, that's fine. We're just trying to give them that range of, of how it would.
I actually wrote, is it a minimum maximum? And I'm like, that's going to need some clarification. I'm going to have to work on that.
The mayor answered my question. Thank you.
Well, I have a lot of random thoughts, so I guess I'll just jump in. Thanks for the presentation and also thank you for all the work that's gone on. This has been kind of a long process and you've taken it through Planning Commission and also brought it to us before, too. So I really like the changes that I see in all of the, the elements that you've been updating. I have a couple of questions, though. One is, I noticed there's some general cleanup in roles and responsibilities of different boards and commissions. And I noticed that, one, we haven't really talked about it and it doesn't come up very often because of so many reasons. But the annexation element just being stricken from Planning Commission's consideration whatsoever. What, what's the process for annexation now in the city? If, if it's amenable to a group of people in the MOOGA who want to attempt annexation, what's the process that would, that they would be going through now with this updated amendment?
Yeah, and I may lean on the city manager for, for answering the annexation question. The, the removal of that was because the annexation element was removed from the Comprehensive Plan. So by it no longer existing, I think, similar to how we, we shifted the, the cultural and historic to, we clarified what that, what that was. So that's, that's why we removed the, the annexation element.
From the purview.
Discussion from the purview of the Planning Commission, yes.
Just because we don't have anything on, in the foreseeable future or in our current Comprehensive Plan.
Right. And we do have the process within the code that allows for an annexation to be proposed.
Yeah.
Whether by an individual or.
So that's not changing. That's, okay. That is much more simplified. That's, that makes a lot of sense and totally alleviates any of my concerns. Okay, now jumping over to, on page one hundred and twenty-four of the packet, it talks about uses of different permitted uses of these commercial spaces and unpermitted uses. And under one of the permitted uses, it says, I'm excited to see pet care, boarding and veterinarian. And under one of the permitted uses, it says, I'm excited to see pet care, boarding, and veterinarian. That seems really useful in a commercial space in a residential area. But then, under prohibited uses, it says, no outdoor pet rents, kennels, or similar activities associated with pet care, boarding, or vet uses. Is that prohibition for outdoor uses, but indoor uses are okay? And if so, would it be helpful to add in the services that are permitted? Indoor, boarding, comma, blah, 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 blah.
That, that would be a great addition to clarify that. Yes, we were looking at the, the outward impacts. As any of the, any use listed as permitted would still have to comply with setbacks, noise, odor, dust, all, all of the, the things that exist for any, you know, single-family to single-family, office to office impact. But that would be a, a really helpful clarification in, in, in that to say indoor and really solidified to say, you know, trying to prevent the, the outdoor.
Yeah, there's like Oxford comma situation going on in the prohibited uses, but that makes a lot of sense. And it might be helpful to just specify indoor for the services. Because yes, I would like to have pet care in. That's something that I would, that I would use. Okay, now jumping over to bike parking amendments. Thank you. This is awesome. I really love, I guess, what Bellingham did in that we, we were looking to them for, for leadership on that. I know that we will be discussing downtown plan holistically coming up. There are a couple of businesses downtown that I will not mention by name, but do not have bike parking associated with their business, and I don't want to bring them up, and I don't want to rat them out because that's not something that's on them. They probably developed their business before we even, when there were horses, right? So they had horse parking requirements. But I'm thinking for implementation, I'm just jumping forward into like, how are we implementing this plan? And how does it intersect with the holistic view of our downtown plan? Is there some way that we could make a note on like, how are we incentivizing? Or how are we helping businesses that might not be able to like front the cost, or I just don't want them to put a really deficient bike parking, just a simple fix, but it's not good enough? And if the city kind of had a, not a fee in lieu, but like, if we had a downtown fund for either businesses or groups of businesses in a small area to coalesce around upgrading their bike parking situation as a retrofit rather than, you know, this code applies to new businesses and to new, new places, but it doesn't really apply to our existing. And because of how slowly things turn over, especially on historic areas of our town, I think implementation of these bike, I, I really like the bike parking stuff. I think it can go a long way to making our downtown area and Canyon Park more walkable. But I think we're gonna have to think about an alternative route for implementation for existing stuff. So have you thought about that? Is that something that now is a helpful time to take a note of, or?
It, it has come up, the, the multimodal approach and what the, what the downtown specifically, how we want to integrate, you know, Public Works, Economic Vitality, how to, how to make sure we are asking the questions around how you, how someone gets around downtown, bus, bike, walk, vehicle, and how that integration in the plan, and how we, we can establish design standards, frontage, front, front, street frontage standards. And then I think through, through that conversation, I think we can look to establish ways to find opportunities where there may be lacking, yet there's no development proposed. Where are those opportunities to, you know, connect with businesses to expand those, those voids in ideal, I'll call it ideal bicycle parking.
Gaps, yeah. Go ahead.
This is like incredibly timely, because Friday, and to not name businesses, I met up with friends near the post office, and the, my friend who rode a bike there had asked the business owner, hey, you don't have bike parking. They were like, you should ask the city. And then I showed up, and he was like, hey, there's no bike parking here. So, and now I'm here. So that's like something that's coming up already, as I think people try to do that. And I would love to know what to say other than like, I will ask. Like, how do we kind of log that and find those like bike rack deserts? It's not a great term.
Yeah, and it's not really like code amendment stuff right now, but I want to like table that, put it in the bike parking lot for later when we start to talk about implementation and we bring, you're working on the downtown plan, I'm sure, already, and getting stuff ready. And so just putting a little note in so that later, I don't have to keep thinking about it. But yeah, I think it is timely, and it's always something that people are asking. Okay, the last disparate thing that I'm gonna bring up is the hard surface coverage stuff. Great, looks fine to me. I'm glad that we would defer to stormwater code. One thing that I'm still unclear on that I brought up before was the sole source aquifer in the northeast portion of the city. Who knows if the federal government even cares about that anymore? But we do have somewhat of a duty to protect and maintain the quantity and quality of groundwater there. And so I'm wondering if the stormwater code itself goes far enough. That might be something that we should follow up on and get more information about. I don't want to put you on the spot about it, and I just kind of thought about it because I, I was looking through and I didn't see it really like called out in any of the follow-ups. I just wanted to make a shout out on that.
Yeah, and the, the North Creek Protection Area overlay, that still applies. So the, and the maximum amount of coverage doesn't change, so if it was, I'll throw out a number, if it was 25% of your total lot area, now it's just still 25% of your total lot area, that's driveway's building footprint. Instead of, well, let's calculate how much building footprint you can have, and then how much driveway, walkway patio you may have as well. So the cap didn't change in the standards, and you know, and we didn't want to include anything in, in in the material as far as if it's not changing, we're not gonna propose, we're not gonna include it in there. So yeah, the, the NCPA still applies.
Okay.
And stormwater would require, you know, the, the same level of review.
Okay, that's, that puts my mind at ease, and I think, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. So I'm not worried about it anymore. Thank you. That's all that I have tonight.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet. The, I am super excited about this stuff tonight. Thank you for all the work you've done on this. I am really excited about corner stores, like more cool businesses to walk to, like more opportunities for entrepreneurs getting started for, for small businesses. Like, I, I think this is so cool, and I think that when we finally start getting these things built, people are gonna absolutely love it. The, I really like what we did, kind of standardizing the sizes for something like, and maybe just because that makes it more just understandable for me, like, there's a certain range there, but it, it seems like a, it seems really reasonable. Like, if you're gonna make a corner store, like, you shouldn't need it to be a 5,000 square foot building, like, that kind of isn't, that's not very corner story, or neighborhood retail. So thank you for that. I think that makes a lot of sense. Did have a question. The later work plan with FAR and overlays on cleanup, and there was one other thing, I think, do we know roughly when that's gonna happen?
Potentially later this year, as part of just a, on the ongoing miscellaneous code cleanup, or code work.
Awesome. Really like the secured, covered, long-term bike parking. Help me understand this though, because there's different colors in the packet where things are added and crossed out. Are we going to have minimum parking requirements for bikes? Or is this just like what should happen if they decide to build it? Because there is a bicycle requirements table that is not crossed out, and it's in purple.
Yeah, so anything in color within the packet is, is either new, or if there's strike through, then that's
Okay.
Been stricken from the, from the code. So that's an add, and it may have been added at a, at a different time, depending on
Okay.
Feedback that we heard.
In the secured, like, long-term bike parking, I think there was a delineation between long-term and short-term. Can we require a 110 outlet so people can charge their e-bikes? In the bike parking?
Yeah, we can, we can look to add that.
Cool.
E, e-bike.
Can you require that?
Support.
Yeah.
Equipment or outlets, yeah.
Unless they're like a 110 outlet, because every e-bike in the world plugs into one of those, and it should be pretty cheap and easy. And I am not sure in terms of like, the numbers of like, if this would work for like requirements, but is there a way we could have an additional requirement? Where like, we have a certain number of bike spaces that are required per parking space that is built? Like, so think minimum parking requirements, but for parking spaces? And it's getting you bike parking instead of car parking? And, and I have not like gone through the numbers and looked up like to see if that makes sense, but could we look and see if there's some way we could? Because what I don't want to have happen is because obviously we're not putting maximums in place. Like, I don't want to like have like this huge big parking garage go up, and like, there's the, there's the bike parking in the corner, and there's not very many of them, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I think, I think the draft is meant to, to accomplish that minimum bicycle parking
Okay.
standard. And some of them, you know, we, we wanted to come, come at it with a sort of middle-of-the-road approach. That's not, not overextending.
Yeah.
We don't want to overburden a property with, with too much
Okay.
in, in short-term or long-term bike parking. So we relied on the guidance from the other, or the, the comparisons of other, other cities that have
Okay.
Standards.
Maybe what we can try and do too is to come up with a, a couple of scenarios to present during the public hearing, prior to the public hearing presentation, to just illustrate what it would look like, and then see if that's landing.
Yes, that. Because I'm not entirely sure that this needs that. Like, I just, I don't have a way to visualize or think about that, because this is not what I do for a living. No, I mean, I'm, I'm super excited about that. I could, I could go on about all the reasons that I think the community is gonna appreciate this change, but we probably don't need that right now. So I will stop talking.
City Manager, can you provide an update on the interdepartmental task force on parking enforcement?
Yeah, absolutely. So as referenced in the presentation tonight, it is something in response to council priorities that we've been working on, bless you. We're, we actually are, have been doing some research. We gathered and came up with our designated assignments. I think the next step that we're looking at is our economic development coordinators helping me out by contacting some parking management vendors. We've done interviews with both Shoreline and Kirkland, who have just recently implemented programs to learn from them and kind of get a relative cost. And we're looking to our vent, to some potential vendor partners with consideration for who's already in Bothell, so that if you're somebody who's parking around Bothell, you don't have to have five apps, maybe two would do. And, and finding out exactly what services are included in there. And then what we're prepared to do is come back and provide council a update of what we're finding out, and kind of what the relative investment would be. I think in, in a check-in, I haven't mentioned it to everyone yet, but for example, one of the things that our police department did was working with our GIS team. We conducted an inventory of what are the available parking spots in downtown. And so we have a GIS layer for that now, and can look at things. So we want to use that information to have conversations with parking management companies to say, so relatively, then what, what would this look like? With all of that, as we, as we look forward, just to kind of prime the pump to some of what makes it more complicated, and then just say, yes, go do that, is that, and then we're looking for the, the infrastructure of what would it take to really operate a program? As we, we updated the school zone infraction program, one of the questions I think that you asked, Councilmember Currie, let me, I can, a comment about how we're, as we continue on, it's not sustainable to have the review taking place the way it is now. So we're really trying to look holistically of what is the resource that we could have at the city to do things like review of whatever type of citation it would be, whether it be parking or moving on a video, and, and pulling that out so that we can free up our commissioned officers to do other work. So all of that will, will cost out a little bit, and we'll be bringing you a concept. I'd like to say that we would do it before the, the, the summer break. It may be a September thing though. We are definitely, this is one of the, one of the priorities that, that I'm picking up right now, just as we have some staffing shortage to keep it moving forward. And, and we're really, yeah, we're, I think we're close to having some great information. We have a follow-up meeting. So that's a lot for a little, but just want to let you know some of the things that we're looking at. But I think the number that sticks in my head is, I think we have about 300, and it's over 360. I think it's close to 380 parking spots in the downtown zone. We just want to make sure that we're maximizing them to the best of our ability.
That's awesome information. Thanks for the update, and I look forward to more in the fall.
Can I ask a clarification question on the parking, bike parking, and as it relates to the corner stores? So I open a hole in the wall thing, you know, are, am I gonna be? In general, is there gonna be parking requirements, car parking, is there, is there gonna be bike parking requirements? And is there gonna be e-bike support requirements if I open something like?
So there'd be no, there'd be no vehicle parking requirements with, with these edits? There, there would be bike parking, basically for, based on the use. So there could be one or two bikes stalls required, and that's either a singular pole with the, sort of the, the hoops on it.
That's the, like the horses they used to do back in the day when that car.
Right. 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 So yes, as, as a change of use, it, it would, it would trip that, the, the thought is that it would trip that bicycle parking as it promotes walking, biking to something locally and provide that opportunity. But we wouldn't have a parking, a vehicle parking requirement any longer.
Won't that add like burden on somebody who's trying to start a lemonade stand in their garage? Like?
I think the, the, the examples of singular or two-bike parking, parking racks are, are inexpensive and very doable.
Okay.
I think we're talking like 100 bucks and some concrete in the ground kind of thing, like it's.
I know, but the thing is, if our goal is to incentivize more of those corner stores, do you want to start out adding those regulations, or do you want to start out minimal regulations and then add the regulations on top once we know that this stuff is actually working, you know? That's, that's the question, the general, the high-level question.
Well, it's like the horse parking situation, right? If we, if we don't add in the regulations early, then we're gonna have to retrofit everything later, and it's gonna have to be voluntary, and it's, we aren't, it's gonna have to be at a higher cost to the city.
It's a good discussion to have on what do we want to achieve with having corner stores, you know? If, if we are, and how do all those regulations work together, I guess? That's the question. Because right now, we're looking at each one of the things, those things independently.
Well, one of the things that we're doing with the, this is a study session.
So now we're having a study session?
Yeah. One of the things that we're doing is trying to incentivize people from not having to drive to the pet store to have their dog's toenails clipped, right? And so if they can go to the, their neighbor's house, and that service is performed at their neighbor's house, then that's something that, that we're reducing the burden on our road infrastructure and everything. So like, holistically, we are trying to incentivize walkability, multimodal transportation. And if that's part of the goal is multimodal transportation, then putting in a $120 bike post and a $20 bag of concrete. a hundred and twenty dollar bike post and a twenty-dollar bag of concrete seems like a really low upfront cost to incentivize this type of, of walkability early on rather than having to come back and trying to map out all the different things in the city. And, you know, if we wanted to add it later, I don't think it'd be easy to do that. And then we'd lose out on all the things that happened first, just like we have now. And there's businesses downtown that don't have any bike parking, which is annoying.
Can I jump in with a suggestion?
Yeah.
I'm thinking about the, I'm going to use the rain gardens as a parallel. That the city has a, has a program in place that provides technical assistance to property owners so that if they want to do a rain garden, that there's support from the city to make that happen. I'm wondering if what deputy mayor is saying is that there's an opportunity for the city to help very, you know, very small neighborhood scale retail business owners to get that, to get those amenities because we're providing some support and assistance. And I don't know if that means like finance, like materials-wise, but that we're, we're trying to reduce the barriers and, and make it accessible for them.
Yeah, I think that, that really aligns with what Jack mentioned of we're coming back with the economic vitality plan. So I think really good suggestion of thinking about what are, what are some ways to resource that? Again, the plan is gonna highlight some things of how are we supporting small businesses, future or existing? And then that might be the type of thing that as we look at future budgets of what, what programs do we need to actually be implementing that economic vitality mission? So I think we can take note of that. I've made eye contact with Ashish. I think we can be ready to, to, to adjust some of that too. If you want it to be in a code solution, I think this is, again, this is a study session. This is a great back and forth conversation to make sure that the, the code meets what you're looking for. But as staff, we will definitely figure out a way to pick that up and put tools in place and measure what are the barriers or what are the opportunities as well.
A, the additional question is the e-bike support that the mayor mentioned, which is that gonna also be a requirement for? Because we talked about having a hundred twenty, whatever, a minimal cost thing for, but if you start adding wiring and electric outlets and all that, is that gonna be a mandated thing also?
And I, I think that's a great question. We could look at the, the scale, you know, the, under a certain square footage, you know, a, a long-term parking for staff or an employee may not be required, if that's, if that's kind of the direction you want to go.
There's no right answer. I mean, we don't know the answer because there's nothing that exists to look at and like measure. So we have to put something out there and measure it and then change it later, you know? But a consideration for, because you think about a new business starting up. Fine, you can add something to encourage the other goals of multimodal travel and all that. But then how much, how many layers of that do you want to add on the, on the, that small business owner?
I will say that there is an exemption built in for no long-term bicycle parking is required on a site where there are less than twenty-five hundred square feet of gross building area. So like it, it probably wouldn't be too difficult to write something in like, you know, if you're putting in a corner store that's four hundred square feet, like maybe you're fine. Like I, it feels like that would be pretty easy to write in.
Find a tree nearby.
And we, we do anticipate along, along the, the lines of Council of Alder's guidance materials that can support if someone's thinking about doing this, what are the helpful hints and tips that we can provide from land use, building code, fire code, economic vitality, how to, how to make a, a project pencil out so it's successful?
Well, and like just generally being reasonable, like if somebody's starting an applesauce business in their backyard and they have a little five hundred square foot building, like maybe a post and some concrete in the ground is gonna do just fine for people walking up there. But if you're building, you know, new housing units, like maybe we want that secure e-bike parking so somebody can have a bike. They can charge it where they store it. They don't have to take it into their front yard, so.
Eight forty-five, Tuesday, June third. Amanda had nothing to say. Okay, we're adjourned.